Hello, everyone. It's Natasha.
Hi Natasha.
Hello Natasha.
Hey Natasha.
What up Natasha?
Hello.
Hey, do we have everybody here?
Hello. Hello.
We have D. Okay, it's uh. It's three o'clock. I'm going to call the City of Odessa Council Work Session Tuesday, April 6th, 2021. Is now in session. We will start off with invocation. Council Councilman Denise Waters. Do the honors of the invocation today, please.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Would you please bow with me? Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here today as a council, I ask that you lead and guide us as a council and make the right decisions for our city. Thank you for our many abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to serve and for the honor of bearing the responsibilities. I ask that you bless each individual that is here today and bless our city moving forward. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Go right into it with item presentation regarding land use assumptions and impact fee, CIP. Is this Kim Lee Horn or is it Dr. Goats, Michael?
Mayor, we're gonna let Kim Lee Horn go into his presentation, but if you recall from a previous work session. We talked about the rather, yeah, we talked about setting a future date for the council to consider the land use assumption. And and the CIP, the capital improvements program. That will be the center of the discussion today. This won't be anything related to the actual fee itself, but rather. How we. How the land use assumptions recommendations will be utilized in this process as well as a list of recommended CIP capital improvement projects. At this point, Mayor, I'll hand it over to Mr. John Atkins, I believe. John's gonna do the the item for our consultant, which is Kim Lee Horn. John, you wanna take it over?
Yeah, I'm gonna. Michael, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Jeff Whitaker. Since he has presented to the council in the past for consistency sake. So Jeff, I'll pass it on to you. And you're muted right now, Jeff.
The mute button moved when you shared screens. Good afternoon, council. My name's Jeff Whitaker and I talked to you a few weeks ago. About the impact fees and we wanted to give you an overview what to expect next week in the public hearing. So as Michael mentioned, really today is about the land use assumptions and the impact fees capital improvement plan. I'm gonna go through several topics and I'll pause at each topic so if there are questions, feel free to ask me as we go through the presentation. But we'll also have, you know, time for the end for any questions you might have. So really during the adoption process, there's really three critical elements to discuss. One is the land use assumptions. One is the capital improvements plan, which those two items are the focus of today. And one is the actual impact fee calculations, which comes after the land use assumptions and CIP. So today, we're just talking about the first two parts of the adoption process. Not the third part of the adoption process. So a little bit about the process. It's really a four step process. There's the planning step. Which is the land use assumptions and impact fee capital improvement plan. There's the analysis step where we actually calculate the impact fee. Then there's the policy step of where we actually started establishing the impact fee and looking at how the ordinance is structured. And then there's the adoption step. This is basically what I just mentioned a second ago. Right now, we're in the analysis step of the process, but I'll say today to you, we're presenting you at the after the first step of the planning step. We've been working with our advisory committee and we've moved a little bit farther, just have some discussions with them as we go along. But today, we're really at the planning step of the process. So we're in the first step of four steps in this process. For those who may be joining us the first time through this work session, we want to do a very quick recap of some impact fee basics. Just so as we talk about this, we're on the same terminology and the same language. There's several funding mechanisms for infrastructure. Really just wanted to emphasize that impact fees is one of the tools to fund infrastructure. Impact fees are just a component. So if impact fees were adopted, you would still need the other funding tools that are potentially out there. They would just fill a hole potentially made for growth necessary by growth. The purpose of impact fees is really to calculate a fee to determine what the new growth impact on your infrastructure systems are. So the key takeaway here is it's just one of the many tools that you might have in your toolbox to accommodate future infrastructure needs. And impact fees, it's a one-time fee for future new development. That's important to remember. The fees only paid once and it's only for new development. So if you're in a downtown area and you're in an existing house and you wanna renovate your house, you don't pay a fee. Or if you're a, you know, existing building and you're just renovating the inside of your building for another use, you may not pay a fee. So it's really for future development, new development, new new growth, new infrastructure. As I mentioned earlier, this idea of impact fees is a tool or mechanism to recover the costs associated with growth. When new growth comes in, it generates new water demands, wastewater demands and traffic demands. And we're trying to capture those dollars of demands so that those dollars may not be passed on to the taxpayers. The money has to, the infrastructure has to come from somewhere and those dollars for infrastructure has to come from somewhere. This is just one of the toolbox to spread that around. The state statute is chapter 395 of the local government code. It's a pretty long chapter in the local government code, but it tells us the rulebook of how to calculate the fees. So a lot of things, the land use assumptions I'm talking about, the capital improvement plans I'm talking about, the reason we're talking about it in a two-step process. You know, our four-step process described is that's what the state statute tells us to do. It wants to make sure we have enough opportunity for public engagement and and interaction and advisory committee that we have through the process. The state statute allows for four impact fees. You see drainage on there. For this purposes, we're only talking about roadway, water and wastewater in this city. So what can we pay for with impact fees and what can we not pay with impact fees? The simplest way I put this is anything that adds capacity to the system. That may be a construction of a roadway thoroughfare. Upsized water and wastewater line or a new traffic signal. Those are all adding capacity. We can include anything that takes to build those added capacity such as survey and engineering fees, land acquisition costs, or potential debt service. We can actually, many communities choose. Much like the city of Odessa has issued some bond debt, you could actually repay that debt service off because those roads are actually built to serve future development. What cannot be paid for the impact fee program? If it's not on the CIP list. We can't use impact fees. We can't repair your potholes. We can't do maintenance. If a waterline breaks, we can't use the impact fee. So fix that waterline. We can't use it to upgrade to serve existing development. Also, staff of Odessa cannot be paid through the administration of this program of impact fees. So all the fees collected from this program. Have to be spent on capital improvement projects directly related to growth. That's really what. The purpose of the program is. I went over the basics pretty quick and I wanna take a pause here to see if. There were any questions on some of the basics or process that we that we had before we started diving into some of the technical elements.
Jeff, on the, were you basically saying that the impact fees could be used to pay down debt? Is that previous debt and is it debt? Associated only with growth of new construction?
It is a little bit of both. If we use previous debt like a road that was built. Our water line that was built before, we can't charge the whole road. We can only charge the extra capacity available. So for example, if you were to build a four-lane road. And you only needed two lanes at the time you built it, we could charge for half of that road because we could, the other two lanes were built for future growth. So we have to do a calculation. So for including a previous project, we have to make sure that we're only accounting for the extra capacity of that project, that percent of the cost.
Is that the entire incorporated city limits or is it just where we're designating where growth and and added. Capacity to the system like what, you know, if we're identifying just a specific area. And we've had previous road improvements or infrastructure, things of that nature can only be in those designated areas or around the city.
That's a good question. There's a thing called service areas. We're talking a little bit. Water and wastewater is generally the entire city. It's kind of a closed system. And so when you're using some water in one part of the area, you're taking away capacity from another part of the area. So. Water and wastewater is kind of that wherever you're serving a water and wastewater and we'll show that service mapping a little bit. Roadway is actually confined. To the corporate limits. So it has to be within the city limits and we have to divide up the city into certain sectors. And we'll show you those sectors in a little bit. And you can, when you collect money in those sectors, you have to spend them in those sectors, but we'll get into a little more detail on that in a second. Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, land use assumptions builds the foundations for the needs for infrastructure. If you weren't growing very fast, you wouldn't need infrastructure. If you're growing fast, you need more infrastructure. So it's really important for us to understand the growth rates. So really what we use for the basics of our growth weight was everything went back to A Vision Odessa. State statute asks us to look at master plans. That's your conference of plan. Those, that conference of plan was used. In 2019 to develop your water, wastewater and transportation master plan. So we're building the foundation of our growth based on the master planning efforts that have been done in 2016 and 2019. The components of our impact fee is the land use assumptions, but we really dive that into tenure growth. So really what's important is how much is Odessa gonna grow in the next 10 years and what does that look like? And then impact fee service areas, which we were just talking about. I'll dive into that a little bit here because those service areas are important. So the existing land use, we have the entire. ETJ, if you will, larger area of Odessa map for residential, commercial and industrial. That's really kind of how it breaks down on the existing land uses. So we wanted to understand what the existing land uses out there because if you recall, we can't charge for existing uses. So we have to make sure we have a great baseline because any of the projects that are serving existing use, we have to account for that. A Vision Odessa had a future land use plan in it. What you see in front of you, this is a snapshot of A Vision Odessa, but as we were working through the master plans. And I can flip back between these a little bit and I think the next slide shows them together between each other. You can see as we work through the master plans. Because the, we wanted, we had to get a little bit more specific. We got a little bit more refined. We're actually doing water and wastewater master plans to serve outside, you know, the boundary that was in A Vision Odessa. So we dug a little deeper. On the ultimate land use and this ultimate land use to the right is, as you can see, it's largely based on A Vision Odessa just. Dug a little deeper to use for your infrastructure master plan. So the. The graph on the right is what we use to build those infrastructure master plans in 2019 that we were talking about. And that graph on the right is the basis for a lot of the assumptions that you'll see momentarily. So there's a lot of numbers on this, on this chart. Some of the numbers I'd like to point out is when you look at residential density. You know, low density residential makes up about a third of your. Your community. And then when you look at commercial, commercial makes up about sixty and a half percent. So we're using these numbers just to understand what part of the community. I always like to point out right away because people don't realize that right away makes up like thirteen point two percent of your community. So the city, the actual transportation right away is a big portion of the community. So this is just really understanding the land use summary across the city of Odessa. As I mentioned, load density was thirty-two percent, but the overall residential land use across Odessa is fifty-two percent. Non-residential is thirty-four percent. And that's the reason I pointed out right away because it doesn't come out to fifty-fifty, but a lot of times you'll see this similar spread that. You know, residential is about half the. Land use area and then you see non-residential and right away about the other half. So just some interesting facts. So here's a summary of how the ultimate land use. For the city of Odessa area plans out. So the ten-year growth assumptions. One of the lines we want to put, this is a quote from your 2016 comp plan. Projections from A Vision Odessa take a conservative approach and an estimated one percent over the plant's twenty-year period. And so that's when we first started looking at. You know, what growth are we gonna use? Well, when we dove into the water and wastewater master plans, that one percent growth, it may work for. Part of the city, but we really wanted to dive into where that growth was occurring. So there's really four. Sectors of the city that we divided growth. And I think we've shown this potentially to the council before, but. A half a percent growth is in the green. That's the area that's more established. It's not growing as much. The downtown's in this area. And then the opposite is the four percent growth to the northeast where you've seen a lot of growth. And just next was three percent growth. So although the comp plans had one percent growth, we were looking at different areas and trying to find that growth percentage. Across Odessa. So the overall projected growth rate, when you actually take these numbers. Around here is one point three percent growth. So it's in alignment with the previous paragraph that I just read from your Odessa comp plan. So that's really what we. The the top number of the growth is we're projecting a one point three percent growth in Odessa. I'll stop there. Talked a little bit about land use. Are there any questions about the land use plan or the growth projection that we were using on master plans?
Anybody have any questions, comments? Go ahead and continue, Jeff.
Sure. Service areas. We got three service areas. Roadway, water and wastewater, all independent studies. We use the foundation of those land use assumptions, the same on independent studies, but they're gonna have different boundaries. The important thing to remember from this. Is funds collected within each service area must be spent on the projects identified that you'll see in a little bit in the same service area within 10 years. So there's a boundary that to spend the money in and there's a time limit. We have to spend the money within 10 years. So roadway, the service area is bounded by the city limits. And there's what's called a six-mile trip limit per chapter 395. When you see the service areas for roadway, you'll see where they're left out. They all meet chapter 395's requirements. For water, it's based on the land use, land use study area that we showed and wastewater are very similar. The water and wastewater service areas you'll see are slightly different. But I'll just go ahead and show you the roadway. We, this is the roadway service areas. We called them one, two and three. You know, three being the northeast, one being the north and two being kind of including downtown into the south. These are important for the fact that if you build, if you build a project in service area one. You have to, and you pay a fee in service area one, it's been serviced every one, two and three. Water. Service areas I mentioned is that future land use study area. And the what's highlighted in blue is the service area bounty. Just, just, just to note, the five-mile ETJ. Is drawn on here just to kind of get a feel of where the ETJ is showing versus the, the water service area boundary. Wastewater service area bounty, very, very similar. When you flip between the two, if this reacts as fast, you can see there's minor differences in the wastewater service area boundary, but they're very similar. Again, one service area for water and wastewater. I'll, I'll now move on to the impact fee capital improvements plan, the second portion of the technical analysis. The first portion is the land use assumptions. If you will, if you think about it, maybe doing this backwards. If you think about an impact fee, its cost for growth. So what I just went over is gonna form the denominator of the equation, what that growth is. So now we're gonna kind of talk about the numerator. What is, what is the cost? What is the future capital improvements plan? The, the water impact fee CIP, this is correlates with your water master plan. We've identified twenty-five projects. Now, one thing that a question was brought before is that we're only looking at tenure growth. And when we actually get into the cost of these projects, we're only gonna be costing the portion of these projects that are needed within the next 10 years. So as you update the impact fee, that that window moves a little bit. So not a hundred percent of all these projects are are included in the cost. But this is the list of the projects that we're gonna be looking at that need to be in the next 10 years. Wastewater, very similar list of projects. There's twenty projects. Corresponds with the master plan and these are the twenty projects that we believe that are gonna be needed in the next 10 years and that they're listed out. Similar to water and wastewater, it's not every project will have three components to it. An existing component, a ten-year component and a future component. So when you think about a cost, if you had a hundred dollars. That existing, there's a cost for existing needs. There's a cost within the 10 years and there's a future component to us. We'll bring a lot of that in the next meeting. This is just focused on the list of projects, but I just wanted to point that out. That was a question that was asked earlier is. Is, you know, if it's an existing project, a portion of that cost would be existing demand. So every project will have three costs associated with it. Roadway, we'll end up having three roadway. Maps because each service area is treated differently. And roadway, we divide up the projects into, we have four types of projects shown, new projects, that's roads that don't exist today. That are needed. We have widening projects. Those are projects that exist today, but they need to be widening. We have intersection projects. Those are projects that are identified for intersection improvements, intersections. I often tell the story is if you're a, most people complain at intersections when you're driving down the street, a lot of people don't complain. So some of the best things you can do to improve the capacity of your network. Is to improve the intersections. So we have several intersection projects listed. On each service area and we have some corridor study projects. One thing that state law allows you to do, if you have a quarter that you like to do improvements, but you don't exactly have a meltdown. You're allowed to do some planning studies for those. So we've identified one quarter study project on Ben Shepard. Service area two. Very similar map. There's a little less projects in service area two because there's. It's more of a mature area, not, not near as much growth, but we do have quite a few intersection projects to improve the capacity at the intersections. We do have one new roadway projects, three widening projects and continuation of that corridor study we just talked about. But these are the projects that were identified for the capital improvements plan and service area two. Very similar to service area two. Is service area three. This is where a lot of the growth is projected. If you remember, this is where that four percent growth was subjective. So quite a bit of new projects. You're probably familiar with some of these new projects such as fraudery. And, and you know, we're just identifying these projects that are, that are needed for growth, a lot more new projects. And quite a few widening projects, only one intersection project because a lot of the new projects will incorporate intersection improvements as they go along. But this is the CIP we're projecting for the three service areas. It's a lot of information for the capital improvements plan. Like I mentioned, all these capital improvements plans are, we went back and looked at the. Water, wastewater and transportation master plan and wanted to try to come up with the needs over the next 10 years that would be needed over the next 10 years. Any questions on the water, wastewater, roadway, CIPs?
Anybody have questions or comments? Go ahead and continue, Jeff.
Yeah. Schedule. We're very early in the schedule. As I, I think I mentioned earlier, we're in kind of a four-step process and the schedule is only provided. Based on where we have now. We have a schedule now. The schedule can be modified as council desires. We're at the work session on April 6th today, really focused on land use assumptions and the impact fee capital improvement plan. The public hearing was set on March 9th. So the public hearing that's occurring next week, next Tuesday, April 13th. It's just very similar to what we showed you today, which we're asking you to approve. To move forward in the study is the land use assumptions, that growth projection. The service area boundaries and those capital improvement plans. And then that's just the first step in the process. After then, we on June 1st, we plan to have. April 27th would be a council meeting potentially to set the public hearing for the actual study itself. June 1st, we put in a work session with council to talk about the fees. June 8th is the potential public hearing on those fees. And June 22nd, 22nd is potentially a meeting to adopt the impact fee ordinance and you know, the only, the only. Real date that's in stone on here right now is the April 13th for the public hearing. That's been said already. The rest of them is just a schedule as we move through the process. We are scheduled to meet with the advisory committee on April 14th. After the 13th meeting to kind of move forward on the next step. So we have a, an advisory committee meeting scheduled for the next day. With that, John Atkins is on the phone. If there's any questions on the water and wastewater side. And I definitely can handle the questions on impact fees on the roadway side, so.
Mayor, I wanted to point out that there are several members from the committee. On the line, I see Mr. Dr. Goats rather, Joe Hurt is on. Believe Mike Withrow, Mr. Pierce is on as well. And I apologize if I missed anyone, anyone else.
Thank you. Does anybody on the committee that, that Michael just mentioned and those guests are with us? Do you guys have any comments or anything you wanna interject it before we continue to proceed? I guess not. Keep going with the schedule. Let's go.
Mayor, I also wanted to point out, as council requested, we, we did send out invitations to hear and listen in on this discussion to several. Builders and developers. So there may be several of those individuals out there. Their opportunity to make comment will be at the public hearing that is scheduled for next week.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, go ahead and go ahead and continue.
I did that.
Jeff, you're done with your presentation part, right?
Jeff is done.
I'd like to ask a question. How are these fees figured and there, is there a? Like a cap for these things? Does the state mandate that or?
Sure, I'll give you a, a brief overview of that. We'll go into a lot of detail when we have the next work session with council, but. The short answer is we'll, we'll, as I mentioned earlier, there's a formula in state law that tells us how to calculate that. So what we'll do is we'll calculate the cost of each of those projects. And then we had to reach project, we need to calculate how much is for existing need. Tenure growth and future need. And the numerator is just that tenure growth cost. And then we divide it by the growth. That's the formula. One thing state law requires us to do is we have to cap that. We have to cut that at fifty percent. So whatever number we calculate as the percent of the study, the state law maximum cap is fifty percent. And so we'll explain that a little bit more. There is a cap by state law that will not allow us to, to calculate. And charge more than fifty percent of what comes out of our analysis.
Okay, and how is that charged to the individual? Parties, contractors, whatever.
Absolutely. The, the process, the way it works is if an impact fee was to be adopted. The first thing is, is if developers are already in the process and they're already plotted, there's a mandatory one-year grace period from state law. So anyone. So anyone that's already in the process right now, it's already plotted, there's a year grace period. Assuming that grace period is over or new, someone new plats, it would be paid at building permit or when they pull their water and wastewater meter. So it's paid, you know, if you will, at the end of the, you know, the ideal is that they've already like they're paying when their impacts occur. So when they're pulling the water meter, then they're pulling the building permit, that's when they pay.
Any more questions? Now who's, uh, uh, are we continuing with the presentation? Who's up next?
Mayor, that is it for this portion of, uh, of, of this particular item as it relates to the land use assumption and capital improvements plan. As the schedule pointed out, there are, are future meetings where we will come back to the council with additional information. Uh, also, we heard loud and clear from the council that we wanted to make sure that that the, the development public was, uh, certainly, uh, made aware of, of, of the steps that we were taking. So there are plans to, to continue to have discussions with the public before we ultimately bring back to the council a recommendation from the, uh, committee on what the actual fee will be. Um, again, you asked us to, to get their input, and that is part of the bar.
Perfect, perfect. Uh, members of the committee that are here, uh, do you guys want to add anything to this? The work that y'all have done, where, where we are, where we're progressing, or you, uh, just want to wait till you have the meeting with the, uh, with the developers, things of that nature.
I defer to Dr. Goats, but I think, uh, we're wanting to wait and talk to the developers and the community.
All right. Sounds good to me. Michael, is that it? Does this wrap up, uh, item one?
It does. Yes, sir, mayor.
All right, that was painless. That was quick. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much. Everybody for attending and, uh, being part of it, and we'll continue, and we look forward to having the stakeholders meeting as, uh, members of the committee will do that, and then wait to report, and then we'll move forward to, uh, next week on Tuesday. Uh, last chance, anybody have any other questions or comments before we move on to item two? All right, for everybody forever holding peace. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna move on to item two. Uh, we're gonna have Randy Ham is going to give us an update on the August thirty-first memorial update. Randy, are you on? I, I know I saw Randy on here. He must be muted.
Right, I'm.
He must be having trouble with this audio.
Yeah, some very bad audio.
I gotta love this virtual. Can you give us some hand signals?
Hey Randy, do you think you can, uh, try to log back on and see if the audio is better? We, we, you can't hear anything right now.
I think he's got low bandwidth. There we go. I think he's getting better. He must be downtown. Are you still, I see he's on.
It doesn't show his microphone on, just the camera.
Is that what it is?
On my end is what, that's what it shows.
I see that he's got a a yellow triangle, saying that he's low bandwidth.
Mayor, can I suggest we move on to the, uh, yeah, the other items. Hopefully Mr. Hack can, can get his, um, bandwidth up.
Yeah, okay, so let's go on to item three, consider a renewal for Motorola Premier One software. Mr. Mike Parish.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Um, and this item, this is going to be our yearly, uh, bill to pay for our public safety software, which includes both um, our Motorola CAD system and Motorola record system for PD. Um, to make notes, this is going to be a one-year agreement. Um, we usually have a multi-year, but since as you can see coming up on the next agenda item, PD will be moving to a different records management system. Therefore, we have to be on a system until it's implemented, which will take about a year. So we're gonna have a one-year agreement, and the total of that is going to be two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, and it's two hundred and ninety-eight seventy, six hundred and forty-two dollars uh, for one-year agreement for both CAD and the renewal of the records manager.
What happens after the year, uh, renewal? Now, we go into a whole different system that will, uh, that will coincide with item four?
Which corrected, he'll talk about that. After that one year, um, we will have the agreement renewed either for one more year or for multi-year only for the CAD system, which is being used by our fire department.
Okay. Okay, so we've been this thing out, or we just, uh, going with who we've had and just an automatic renewal?
This is a renewal for who we've had, I think, for the past five years now.
Okay. So do we know if these, these prices are competitive? Do we have that answer?
Well, we, we do know that it's going to be less. That's one reason why we're going to our records, the Axon record system, which Mr. Gurkey will be going into. But again, um, the reason why we have this price now, usually with the multi-year, you get discounts. Um, and it's, it's different factors that go in with those discounts plus, but the reason why we went to the one year is because the multi-year also includes elements like upgrades for the hardware and upgrades for software, which we won't be using since we're going to a new system.
Does council have any questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Parish there, thank you. We're gonna go on to item four. We're gonna consider approving the purchase of management system for OPD. Chief, do you Kirkie?
Good afternoon. Um, this council agenda is to approve the purchase of a records management system for the Odessa Police Department um, from Axon Technologies. Axon is a company that used to be called Taser. Taser changed its name to Axon. That is still the, the, they, they still provide the ECW weapons, so that we use. Um, we chose Axon because our body cams are um, our in-car camera, all of our all our interview room cameras are, um, tasers are all Axon. Axon has an extremely good reputation for customer service, and, and we've experienced that with them. Uh, whereas with Motorola, we've experienced, uh, just the opposite. Uh, for the, the entire time that we've been with Motorola, we've been unhappy with the product. And it, it's time to move on. As, as you look at the, the price, um, the price is very reasonable compared to the overall price for Motorola. With, with the one year, um, for Motorola's RMS and CAD is almost three hundred thousand dollars. With this, you're getting a hundred, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars a year for five years. So I, I think that is extremely reasonable. Um, we did not bid it out, and the reason we did not bid it out was because it integrates seamlessly with all those systems that I that I've already talked to you about, and it is a, uh, it's an advancement for us from where we're at.
Okay, so basically going for best product, not just price?
Yes, and also this, understand that it takes, this is going to take, once we sign the agreement, it's going to take about eighteen months for implementation.
Okay.
So, um, we will very likely have to, um, next year, this time come back and, and, uh, purchase another year of Motorola's. Which will roll, which that that contract will roll over to, uh, the, uh, April of two thousand twenty-three. Axon, well, we should be, have implemented Axon before then. We have an agreement with Axon that even if it's implemented before then, they will give us those, those months free until April twenty of, uh, twenty twenty-three. So essentially, we won't be paying for both products at the same time. That was a concern that we had.
Chief Kirkie, real quickly, without going into too much detail, when you say record, record management system, you give us just for us laymen, what the, what that actually means? What is that system?
Oh, that, that's tremendous. That's what we write our every report that we, uh, we write is on that records management system. That is how we you get our stats. That is how we do our racial profiling report. That is how we manage every report that we write is managed through that system.
So it's all centralized and accessible?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
So, so chief, the five hundred and nine thousand is a five-year price?
Five hundred and five, yes, sir. That is a five-year price.
Five hundred and nine.
And again, that doesn't start, that five years doesn't start until April of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I got, got that part. Yeah. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Council, does anybody have any more questions or comments? Okay, Chief Kirkie, thank you. Thank you very much. We're gonna circle back to item two, uh, and, uh, the August thirty-first memorial update. Uh, Randy?
I think. Yes, yes. Yeah, you do, sir. I am. Thank you for being patient with my technical difficulties. Uh, right. As many of you know, uh, very soon after the August thirty-first memorial, our shooting, uh, the city council had directed uh, Odessa Arts to work on a memorial to honor not only the victims and the survivors, but also the first responders for that day. After, uh, an exhaustive search of over a hundred, uh, artists, the, uh, I'm gonna share this with you now. There we go. The Bright Star Memorial was, uh, commissioned by artist Jim Sanborn from Maryland. And what you're seeing right there is a artist's rendering of the final product. It consists of an eleven-foot bronze cylinder with the names and life dates of the victims and survivors, as well as uh, quotes from the family members. It's a beautiful way to remember each of, uh, of the people and also give the community a place to go and reflect. Uh, our original site for this has been Memorial Gardens. Uh, when we started this project, the first thing that Mr. Patton and I discussed was how to retrofit Memorial Gardens to, to house this, and, uh, those of you who have visited Memorial Gardens know, there's a lot of art already there. It's also part of a drainage. Uh, this has got to set on level ground, and it started to exponentially increase the price of this project from the original two hundred up to nearly seven hundred thousand dollars to be able to retrofit the park in order to get it ready. Uh, we didn't really think that that was going to be a problem at the time, uh, but as we all know, we've had COVID and, uh, a really terrible economic climate, which has affected the fundraising. At the same time, the University of Texas of the Permian Basin began having discussions about a fiftieth anniversary plaza to open in twenty twenty-three at the corner of JBS and Forty-Second Street. Uh, and they were searching for a piece of art to anchor the plaza. So over the Christmas holidays, I had several productive discussions with UTPB staff and leadership about what it would look like to have the Bright Stars Memorial housed at the UTB, but PB Plaza. Uh, and for me, and also for UTPB, it was a natural fit. UTPB was the de facto command center. Uh, the plaza location is in a very high-traffic area, very close to the original site of Memorial Gardens. It strengthens the ties between the university and the community. And it acknowledges and honors UTPB's role in response to the shooting. So we have been working on a memorandum of understanding about what that partnership would look like. And you can see the details in, in this slide, but to, to distill it down to its essence, Odessa Arts would be responsible for the art piece itself, the cylinder, the ongoing maintenance of the cylinder uh, and the art piece, and it would also remain as part of the City of Odessa's uh, permanent art collection. The art would in no way be owned by UTPB. It would stay within the city's, uh, ownership. UTPB, on the other hand, would be responsible for the design and maintenance and construction of the plaza, which makes, uh, our job a lot easier and gives us a really great partnership in which to make sure that the plaza is well taken care of, the artwork is well taken care of, and best of all, it lowers significantly the price of this, uh, of this monument. So I wanted to make sure and keep, number one, keep city council and city staff apprised of this situation. And as directed in the public art master plan, city council gets final say on the location of all artwork commissioned by the City of Odessa, so. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Randy, work, Randy, work, work, yeah, go ahead.
Which corner is this on?
This would be Forty-Second and, uh, Parkway, where the stragglers are, the cattle drive. That piece is being moved back towards campus, and that berm with the sign is being bulldozed to make that a flat area. And it will be that corner.
That's why I was asking, there's already something there, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Randy, what's your timeframe and then, uh, the preliminary designs, you know, to, uh, for that corner to be accessible? Is it gonna change? Is it gonna include, uh, uh, ingress, egress, parking, things of that nature? Is it gonna be lit? I mean, do we, are we even that far?
Yes, sir. Uh, the design will be, the design of the plaza will be used, uh, based on the artist's design for the Bright Stars Memorial. So the first thing we need to do is make sure that the art piece is going there, because the plaza will be designed around the art piece so that it is organic. There will be parking available. Uh, and that will happen in the design process. I don't know that UTPB has decided whether to put parking on the Forty-Second Street side or on the JBS side, but there will be parking as part of the plaza design.
Okay. I get, question that I'm asking is that do we have to include engineering and, uh, I mean, Michael, from our standpoint, uh, I guess we will address that that becomes an issue as far as engineering, uh, if there's an ingress or egress on either JBS or Forty-Second?
Mayor, that, that should be part of the process as UTPB and certainly this art project, as they begin to put together their ultimate plan for this location, specifically this site. They will work with the, uh, the city's traffic and engineering department to make sure that we are we and they are designing that in the safest manner possible. So yes, there will be a lot of discussion with the city staff as it relates to uh, entrances and exits associated with this, uh, uh, this particular site.
Randy, what's the target date for, uh, starting completion?
The completion date is September twenty twenty-three, which also allows a lot more time, A, to work with the families and get the quotes and get the art constructed. And it allows UTPB more time for fundraising and also design. One of the things that I like about aside from the placement is that it gives the project some breathing room, and we don't feel rushed that we have to meet like the second anniversary uh, of the shooting, which was our original target date, uh, which was a little rushed to me. And I think that now with a twenty twenty-three date, uh, that we have a lot more time to work on this and do it right and do it in a cost-effective manner.
Very good, very good way to be, a way to be, uh, 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 liquid on this and be able to move it around. And I think you're right. I think this, this gives us a a, a bigger footprint and, and, and continues the, uh, the relationship with the university. Uh, does the council have any questions?
I do, mayor. Uh, this is.
Yes, ma'am.
As you, as you, I'm sure you know, uh, the city is is in some negotiations right now with UTPB in regard to our parks and our ballfields that we have that once again are owned by the City of Odessa, but it's on UTPB land. And, uh, and so that becomes a very sticky situation. And in regard to, uh, the monetary requirements from the university. And in regard to, uh, the monetary requirements from the university, um, I, I, I am not opposed to this side. I, I wanna make that very, very clear. I am concerned, long-term, how much the city is going to be required to pay to, uh, have this monument on UTPB land.
Good point.
It'll be something that I would expect perhaps you and Michael would be able to discuss with the university and get some preliminary information because I, I really don't wanna be a few years down the line or not even that many, and the university require a substantial amount of money from the City of Odessa to maintain that monument.
Very good point. Um, Michael, that, uh, during the whole process of the design and stuff like that, I guess this is something that we could, uh, address with the university.
Certainly, as you pointed out, uh, it'll be important for us to continue to work with the university on all of these matters.
Absolutely. I, if I could just, uh, interject one thing as well, is that in the draft of the memorandum of understanding we have right now, there is no cost to the city for citing the artwork on the university property. And at the, at the moment, that MOU is for twenty-five years, that our responsibility is simply to maintain and, uh, keep up with the maintenance of the art piece, and that's what our responsibilities are. And the maintenance of the plaza falls to the university.
Okay. So, so Randy, you guys are gonna be able to maintain, uh, provide for that maintenance, or is that going to be something that is gonna be in addition to what the city provides to the?
Uh, no, ma'am. This will be part, as, as part of the public art plan, Odessa Arts, uh, is contractually, uh, responsible for maintenance of public art uh, by the city. And so we take in, in the budgets for each of the pieces that we commission, we put back one to two percent for maintenance. Luckily, this particular piece is can, uh, very low maintenance. Uh, and that was part of the reason we selected this design.
But, but, man, just talking about the, the, the art piece is the cylinder. So that's what.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just the cylinder. The rest of it, it falls under the responsibility of the university.
The cylinder with the electrical component for the lights.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We, uh, and, and finally, before we, before we go, there is a, uh, we do have a considerable foundation ask out that would put us over the top, uh, and we would be done with fundraising for this project in order, and they did a preliminary site visit at Memorial Gardens, uh, before we had even started talking to UTPB, and they were not in favor of funding this project at Memorial Gardens. They all are in favor of funding it at UTPB, uh, but we would require, uh, a vote from city council agreeing to house that, uh, on UTPB property before those funds would be released.
Michael, is there, is there a reason why we have to, is that just a housekeeping situation? Because we own the art?
So Mayor, I, I believe on this one, um, there's, there's a couple of things happening here. One, we initially, whenever we approved this project, it was gonna be at this, at, uh, Memorial Garden. So obviously, it's important to make sure that the council now knows that there is another possibility or another location. So it'll be important to get your approval on that. Uh, and then secondly, I think it was important for Randy to, to really kind of lay out what that partnership will be with the university. Uh, I will check with, uh, the legal department, but I, we may or may not need, uh, a, a resolution or, uh, an official approval from you guys. But if we do, Mayor, you will see that at next week's council meeting.
Okay, what's the, what's the, what's the process when we, uh, when the, uh, the MOU will be outlined between the three entities? Basically, the Odessa RGTP and City, the City of Odessa. Uh, I'd like for the council to be able to put eyes on that, uh, you know, before we finalize everything. Uh, that way we can answer concerns that, that the, the, uh, rows, which are very valid concerns, or not concerned, but you know, uh, you know, she's right, you know, basically what we're dealing with right now. Uh, so, uh, can you keep the council informed as that process, uh, gets to finalization?
Yes, ma'am. I, I think I'll ask Randy and myself to, to work on that and make sure that you are fully apprised of all of the discussions. Certainly, you'll get to see whatever memorandum before we actually ask you for approval.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that. Randy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good work. I think, uh, I think we're moving forward very, uh, very nicely and being inclusive of the community and the family, university and all, and also adhering to some, uh, comments and, uh, and, uh, and concerns by the council. Uh, I think that, I think it's a great project, but definitely needed. Uh, counsel, do you have any comments or questions before we move on? Randy, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to item five, uh, the G two hundred class update. Joey, Joey White, is he on?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this class, we actually put on about a year and a half ago, and council members, Ms. White and Ms. Willis attended the class. Uh, this is a three-hour, uh, course. It's G two hundred, which is designed for, to be a Texas Public Officials workshop. It's honestly, it's designed to introduce county judges, uh, commissioners, mayors, and city council members and other elected officials to emergency management. Uh, I've set up a class, uh, attentively. I've got several dates. I'll push this to Mr. Marrero, but it's gonna be at the end of May. Uh, I'll also be advised that I've invited the extra county commissioners courts. They've got new commissioners on that court as well. Uh, this would, uh, be good for them to go through. So I've gone through Ricky George, who's the EMC for the county, to invite them as well. But this course addresses, uh, legal authorities for emergency management in Texas, uh, deals with local, state, and federal organizations for emergency management. The local emergency management functions, responsibilities, the four pages of emergency management, which is mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. Uh, and emergency management program activities such as planning, training, and exercising. So local governments make plans to provide resources to protect their citizens from hazards that threaten their communities. This is done through mitigation activities, preparedness plans, uh, responses to emergencies, and recovery operations. The local government level, uh, which is us, which is, is also the most important level, to develop emergency management plans because local governments serves a link between us and the state and federal agencies in the emergency management network. Local laws will specify, uh, a chain of commanding emergencies. It will spell out who reports to, to whom. Uh, basically, this is gonna be a basic emergency management class for anybody that is curious or wants to know more about emergency management. Also be advised, uh, every three years, Midland International Airport has a major drill. We are gonna take part in that this year. We've been invited to attend, and y'all know as well as I do that if, uh, something happens at the airport, we're gonna be involved heavily. Midland cannot handle that on their own. It's probably gonna involve not just Midland and Odessa, but outlying agencies. So it's gonna, uh, we're gonna have to have a joint response to this. And we will be heavily involved. Again, this drill is on May the twenty-first. If anybody would like to observe this, I'll make plans or y'all can actually observe this firsthand. If you wanna sit and see what goes on, and usually our part in this type of drill is EMS, uh, we'll have some of our guys that can set up as a transport officer or staging officer. I myself will be with the EOC, part of this, with, uh, Midland Fire. I'm sure Chief Ortega will be with me since it involves all of our personnel. He's our ops chief. But, uh, very good drill, very, with, through COVID this year, I've heard that the, all the victims are gonna be dummies. We can't have a lot of victims in the times of COVID. But this G two hundred, which will be a couple of days before this drill, will be a very good precursor for y'all to get an idea of emergency management before we do this. And like I say, I've invited, uh, extra county commissioners as well, because we've got a few new commissioners on board. It's just important that, uh, they get on the same page as we are. And I guess, very good, informative class for people that wanna learn more about emergency management.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman White, Councilman, uh, Willis, do you have any comments up there? See, I've taken this class. Uh, I know I had something that I've spoken with, uh, with the chief and, and OFR, uh, because of what we've gone through with COVID and still, just the remnants of it, being able to deal with an emergency that's been, uh, laid out for such a long period of time that we as elected officials really need to learn what our roles are, because we don't know. And, uh, and so, you know, if we're, if they're, and, and they said there's something that we can put, put in place for us to be trained and get an understanding one hundred percent forward. But you guys taking this, what, what, what's your personal assessment on it?
I, I would strongly, this is a feature, I would strongly recommend that any of our council that has not gone through this, take it, because, uh, one of the first and foremost things are the legalities involved in, in requesting, uh, emergency management aid from the state or federal level. There's, there are certainly protocols that have to be followed before you can go in, and it really kind of helps explain that. You know, we've seen in the past with some natural disasters that other areas have had, you know, New Orleans and, uh, you know, the coastal areas. And you'll see them interview people on, on the news that are saying, no one's come in to help. No one's helping us. The federal's not here. The federal's not here. But this kind of helps you to understand what, um, what each and every person's role is and the entities that must be involved and the protocols that must be followed. And so I would really recommend that you, that you consider going through this class.
Perfect, completely, uh, completely agree. Does anybody else have any comments and, uh?
I can hear. I think it was very worthwhile, and I, and I believe, as Joey said, it was maybe three hours. It was well-spent three hours. It's valuable information there. Yeah.
I'll, I'll speak, uh, to the council about our fire department. We have a very good working relationship with the state level who are, and our regional coordinators do speed. If we need anything, this man, he does not hesitate. He gets it to us. Now, it's expected at the local level, we handle everything we can, and if we can't, we reach out to the state, and if we can't with the, with the local state, that's when we reach out to the feds. But we have, uh, very deep brands and high places, uh, and we are in good standing with TDM, which is important. Dude's speed is, he's, he's very important in the TDM world, and it, it just makes me feel good to know that if I call D, uh, he's not only a colleague, but he's a friend. If I get on the phone and call dude, he never doesn't answer his phone. I don't care if it's seven in the morning or two at night. I called him about, uh, a month ago on a grass fire, about midnight, and dude sent us help. So emergency management is, it's a necessary evil. We don't like to deal with it, but it's one of those that if we need it, we need it. So we need to be training. We need to be doing drills. Uh, we need to be up to date on our stuff so that if something happens, we don't, uh, look like a chicken with a head cut off.
Amen to that. Very good. Uh, any more questions or comments to, uh, to, to Joey White?
Mayor, we will get to, uh, that date as well as an agenda, um, and, uh, be able, hopefully be able to determine how many of the council will be able to make that.
For the training or the May twenty-first?
For the actual G two hundred training, sir.
Okay, and also make, see who, who's available for the May twenty-first, uh, observation?
I'll send both, I'll send both those dates to, uh, Mr. Marrero and keep him informed of what we're doing. He can forward that to council.
Joey, thank you. Joey, thank you for what you do, and you can already pit me down for both of those dates. I would love to see what you guys are doing and.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, any more questions and, uh, comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to item six, consider purchase of an airbag exhaust system. Mr. Ortega?
Good afternoon, everyone. Hear me?
Good afternoon. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, yes, this is, uh, to consider the purchase for airbag exhaust system. This is a, a system that would go into every existing fire station that we have except for Station Six, because Station Six, we will be, uh, replacing next year. Um, well, thus far, Reschka's been working to try to reduce cancer risk to our firefighters, and, and in that process, we've taken a lot of classes, and we, we realize that, um, uh, diesel exhaust is, is one of those big factors that, that is causing a lot of cancers. And, uh, we wanna be proactive in, in our policies and our procedures and even our firefighting techniques, and this is another part of that. Uh, this, um, will be at a cost of, uh, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, we did, um, put this in the supplemental request, I believe, a year before last. It has taken a little bit of time to get, to get all of this, uh, taken care of, but, um, uh, we've, we, we did ask for a hundred thousand of that in that account, and then we're gonna supplement the rest out of a lifeline account. Um, the reason it took a little while, these, these airbag systems are actually, we have to get measurements of every, um, opening in the, in the truck room bay. We had to send them how many runs that those individuals make, how many times those doors open. Um, and that's how they come up with this process of, okay, here's the type of system you need in this, uh, fire station. So any other questions on, on that?
How many fire stations? Is that one fire station or?
That, that's gonna be for seven fire stations.
The one fifty-eighth for seven fire stations, okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yes. That, that includes the, the exhaust system itself. There's gonna be lots of, uh, filters to go with that. There's also, um, um, kind of a, a, a sensor, basically, wh- when that system, when those doors open up, it senses that those doors are opening up so that it kicks on the system, so that it starts immediately capturing. Uh, and then they'll stay on for a periodic amount of time after the door closes to completely capture everything. Uh, those sensors also tell you when it's time to change out those filters. Um, we're just purchasing this, and along with, uh, I talked to Scott Anderson with the building, um, uh, with, and there, we're gonna install these ourselves, so.
Hello, Chief Ortega, I was looking at this, and, uh, why is the, uh, central station so much more than the others? Is it just an older station?
It's, no, actually, Central is our largest station. Um, they have the largest truck room, um, and they have more units that actually respond. So even our, our, for example, Station Four, it has, um, several bays in it, but usually only two of the bays are functioning at all times because they have an engine and a medic that are constantly moving out. And then we have reserve medics and the engine in there. Whereas Central, we have a battalion, uh, battalion Tahoe, a division one Tahoe, an engine, a medic, a tanker, and those run often. And so those, there's quite a bit of exhaust in this particular, uh, bay. It's a larger, it's a five-bay, uh, as well. So it is, it'll take a little bit more to get it.
Makes sense. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Uh, I think you're muted. Yeah.
Wow. I'm trying to multitask here, which is, I'm trying to multitask, which isn't good. Any more questions or comments? All right, we're gonna move on to item seven, consider the purchase of a new fire truck for Station Number Nine. Mr. Ortega?
Okay, uh, again, this is to consider the purchase of a new fire truck. This fire truck will go into our new Station Nine, uh, that's been built out in Longdale, uh, Eighty-seventh Street. Uh, the engine will be, uh, the newest, uh, member of our fleet. Um, we did work on this engine, made a few changes. These are recommendations from the actual, uh, our, our crews that work off of these engines to make them a little bit, uh, more user-friendly and, and maybe some of the things that we didn't hit on point with the last, um, fleet. Uh, ju- just some, some, some changes on that, and, and so we were able to, to get the cost down a little bit. Um, we've also changed, um, in our current fleet, we have what's called a MUC system, and basically, it's a lot of electronics in that truck. Um, we were, we were initially sold on that it would help, um, diagnose the trucks a little bit quicker, but we've realized that it's more of a hassle than it, even just hardwiring the truck. And so we, we went to that. Uh, this is gonna be at a cost of seven hundred and three, uh, thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Uh, this is through Sid and Smarton, and it is a HAC buy. Uh, this is gonna be funded through the, um, Uh, this is going to be funded through the, um, a same account that the, the new fire stations are, are coming out of.
Now, is this gonna, is this new unit going to be retrofitted into an existing chassis?
Uh, no, no, that's, that, that includes the chassis and everything, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, now we, we did go with a little bit different chassis than what we currently have. This is a, an enforcer.
Yeah, I was thinking.
And so, uh, we also changed over to a pack car engine as far as from the Cummings engine. Uh, I did speak with, uh, Assistant City Manager Phillip and then also with our sanitation, um, uh, director. Because they went to the pack car engines from the Cummings and they've, they've had really good luck with those. And so we wanted to give, uh, give that a shot. Because currently in our fleet, you know, we have all Cummings engines and except for our ladder trucks, those are, those are Detroit's. But, uh, we don't have a lot of trouble with them, other than when we, when we do send those in for repair. It takes a long time to get those repaired. The Cummings does not put us to the front of the line. They, we're just wherever we're at, that's where we're at. And so it takes a while to get any warranty stuff done. And we're, we're finding out that PACR is going to work with us a little better than they have with sanitation. So we, we felt that may be the better way to go. We're going to give it a shot with this one in you.
Okay. Does council have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. I have a question. Uh, Saul, is this a, is this going to be an engine or is this a truck?
This is an engine.
Okay, I thought it was. It's just, you know how that is, the terminology's one place it said fire truck and another referred to.
No, this, this will be an engine. It, it's going to really resemble what we have now. There's just some, some, some subtle changes. We tried not to change too much of the, uh, general structure so that we can still. Put all of our equipment in the same area. Um, we like to have that design because it, it, it's easier when you, we move people around. Or people are working at other stations or working with a different station that go to that truck. They can go to the same compartment and find the same equipment, same tools. It, it makes it a lot more efficient when you're on the fire ground and, and those seconds count.
You bet. And on this, on this price, is this just for the unit? Or does this involve, um, the preliminary equipment that goes on it?
This is just for the unit.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
And, and that does not come with hose either, right?
It does not come with hose, no ma'am.
Okay.
And, and Chief Ortega, just, just for, um, as a reminder, we purchased the ambulance at the last council meeting in Zecarack for this new station?
Yes, yes, sir. So it's kind of going along with that, yes, sir.
Does anybody have any more questions or comments?
Mayor, I've got a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Is this coming out of the C O money from about two years ago?
Uh, we're looking at taking it out of the, the, the money that was allotted for the, the two fire stations?
Yeah, the answer is yes, Tom.
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's what I understood. Thank you.
Yes.
So is this money coming from the, uh, the under budgeted from, uh, Station Nine? Of the construction?
It, it's all coming out of the same, uh, the same, uh, twenty-four million, uh, that we were allotted, uh, Mr. Hope.
Oh.
And, and that twenty-four was for both stations and equipping both stations?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any more questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to item eight, to consider approval of a PSA with Newton Engineering, uh, Mr. Feldman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, let me share my screen. Can you, can you see the, the map?
It's coming slowly.
So Public Works wants to rebuild Dixie Boulevard from Forty-Sixth Street up north to the city limits. And this agenda item, it will approve a professional services agreement with Newton Engineering. To design that section of road, uh, roadway to reconstruct Dixie Boulevard. This, this contract will involve, um, installing ADA ramps where necessary. Reconstructing the intersection of Dixie Boulevard at Fifty-Second Street. We're looking at the option of, um, concrete at that intersection if the budget allows. And we're looking at the section south of Fifty-Second Street. On Dixie is currently in an inverted section of street, meaning everything drains to the middle of the street. We're looking to see if we can convert that to a crown section if the drainage will allow. Um, and it is anticipated to, um, have this design work completed in a couple of months. And then we would be in construction of this section of Dixie this fiscal year. Um, and the funds for this design work is coming out of the, um, annual street maintenance account. And this contract is for fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to Newton Engineering. And I can answer any questions if you have them.
On the inverted, uh, when they do the, uh, the topography, when they start doing that, uh, that altar? Is that where you can determine which way, if you can, when you're doing the construction phase, which way that water is going to flow? If it's going to go towards a park away from the park? And are we, are we going to go to a crowning with a curb and gutter system?
Oh, it, it currently Dixie Boulevard through that whole corridor drains to the south from Fifty-Second Street. So the, the, and the only question is, it's, it's interesting because that section of Dixie that's highlighted in yellow between Fifty-Second and Forty-Sixth. That's currently in an inverted section. But then south of Forty-Sixth, it, it converts already to a crown section. So we're trying to figure out if we can make the whole, the whole, that whole section of Dixie crown. And have the water draining down in the concrete curb and gutter. Versus having the water drain in the middle of the street where there's just asphalt. And having the water, any delayed water sitting there on that asphalt, which is not ideal.
Yeah, because it ponds, once it does its conversion of Forty-Sixth, well, little doesn't move, it just ponds there.
Exactly.
Okay. Very good. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, uh, uh, contract for the, for the topography. So does anybody have any, uh, questions or comments for, uh, Mr. Feldman? All right, sir. Thank you very much for that. Anything else you'd like to add before we move on?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me get back to my space. Okay, so we're going to move on to item number nine, consider an ordinance to establish speed limits, reduce speed, uh, school zones. And prohibited parking zones. Mr. Feldman, you're up again.
This is, this agenda item, uh, is covering several traffic related ordinances that need to go into the city ordinance. Um, this first one is dealing, a couple, this first couples dealing with speed limits. This first one is Yukon Road east of Fodry. There's existing no, uh, speed limit on this road. So I'm trying to establish a speed limit of forty miles an hour on this section of Yukon. The next, um, road under consideration is Mission Boulevard. This section of Mission Boulevard between Durado up to one ninety-one is fully built. Again, it has no existing speed limit, so I'm wanting to establish a speed limit of forty on this section of Mission. Um, Fodry Road, Fodry Road, which is currently in design as a five lane, uh, roadway. Between one ninety-one up to Yukon, the existing speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour. And with the, with the building of the new road and all the residential development that is occurring this, in this neighborhood. What I'm looking at is lowering the speed limit from fifty-five miles to forty-five miles an hour. The next item of consideration for traffic ordinances is a school zone. Um, this is Hayes Steam, Steam Academy. This elementary school currently does not have a reduced speed zone in front of the school. So what I'm looking at is to install a, a reduced speed zone in front of the school. The way this system works is that, um, ECISD, um, pays for the equipment. The city of Odessa installs and maintains it. The next section of ordinance changes is dealing with no parking zones. Um, this first one has to deal with, um, West County Road at the very north end, uh, off of three eighty-five. This section of West County Road is actually in the city limits. This request came to me from Tech Dot. Um, Tech Dot does not have the mechanics to, um, um, install or, um, uh. Provide for no parking zones. So when they have a section of their roadway, they usually reach out to the city for enforcement and signage. So, um, this, what I'm proposing is, uh, no parking on this section of West County Roads on both sides of the street. The next street is Yukon Road. Um, this is entirely, this section of Yukon is entirely in the city limits. Um, the, uh, original request came to me for the streets that intersect Yukon Road just south of the airport, Schley Meyer Field. Um, what was happening was, um, tractor trailers were parking along the sides of Yukon Road. So that when drivers were trying to get onto Yukon, the trucks were limiting sight distance. So I, I worked with, um, community development and they were real good to get the trucks moved. Sort of on a temporary basis. But what I, when, when I was looking at this area and I was looking, I started looking at the entire corridor. And, and really there's no reason to have on-street parking on Yukon on either side for the entire corridor. If there's existing businesses or houses, they have off-street parking or they take access from a side street. So what I'm proposing is to prohibit parking on both sides of Yukon for the entire length. And all of this section of Yukon is currently within the city limits. And the next section and the final section is Fodry Road again. That same section we were talking about earlier about reducing the speed limit. Um, with the, um, upcoming new roadway, which is going to be a five lane roadway with curb and gutter. There's not going to be any room on this roadway for parking. So what I want to do is I want to catch it now, get it into the ordinance. So, um, after the, the new roadway is built, we can sign it and take care of any future issues before they become an issue. Um, and all of these items, I took to the Traffic Advisory Committee on March twenty-fourth. And they reviewed them and approved these changes. So I am, uh, open to any questions if you have them.
Yes, on the, uh, West County and three eighty-five, uh, what's the footage on that? That's going to be, that you're proposing for no parking?
It's, it's the entire length and this, the, the end down here is the, the end of the city limits. And off the top of my head, I don't know what this length is.
Okay.
But it's all in the city limits.
Okay. Does anybody have any, uh? Any comments or questions? For Hal?
I have a question. Hal, go back to the, like, the beginning, um, maybe the second slide that was, uh, Yukon. And I want to say it was the Yukon that goes out to Parks Bill with that section.
Yeah. Are you talking, are you talking about the section for the speed limit or the section for about no parking?
Yes, just speed limit.
Okay, okay. This is the one.
And that's the one that's proposed for forty?
Correct.
Isn't, I mean, and I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I was just a little bit surprised because there's not much out there but pasture land at this point, is there?
Good question. Um, when I drove it and there is a, sorry, touchy mouse.
Touchy mouse.
So when I drove it out here in the, another area, it's mostly residential in this whole area. There is a school coming to this block. But what other, what, what concerned me also is that most of this is straight roadway, but we've got a few curves in here.
Yeah.
I didn't feel comfortable over forty miles an hour with these curves.
Okay.
So, so with the schools, the, the curves and all this residential traffic, that's why I'm proposing, uh, forty miles an hour.
That sounds good. And, and then, um, on, you know, that part on the no parking on, um, Yukon? Is there any particular business that maybe has habitually parked, parked trucks there that, uh, we can? You know, reach out to also. I think, I think having the no parking is great because that, that. That could get really dangerous in that area.
When I went out there and saw it and, and when I saw the trucks out there, it didn't look like any one particular. I, I, what I'm thinking is that drivers were parking their trucks. And then either, I assume that they were living in that area south of Yukon. So that they either drive or walk to their house, but that was convenient parking. That's, that's what I assumed.
Okay, all right. I think it's a very good idea. I appreciate your efforts.
Is there any more questions or comments for, for Hal?
Hal, going on Yukon, uh, up to Fodry is fifty-five miles an hour. And you're saying that we need to slow the traffic down, but it's been a while since I've been out there.
Well, you are correct. Yukon Road west of Fodry is fifty-five miles an hour. And I'm not, I'm not planning on changing that. I'm planning on, on establishing, making east of Fodry, uh, forty miles an hour.
Okay. And we can write tickets already on Fodry. It's fifty-five, I mean, on Yukon. Excuse me, on Fodry, going south of there with this particular screen you have here. You'll lower it from fifty-five to forty-five. We can write a lot of tickets at fifty-five. That traffic's coming down there sixty, sixty-five.
That, that would surprise me, yes.
Any more questions or comments? Hal, thank you very much. We're going to move to, uh, item ten, consider approval of a PSA with, uh, Kim Lee Horn for design of a linear detention pond. Hal, you're up again.
Um, so this agenda item is for a, an additional professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. For the design of linear detention ponds for Fodry Road. Um, the design of this project will develop an excavation plan with a parks overlay component. For the city-owned property north of Yukon Road. As I said earlier, we are currently in design with Kim Lee Horn for Fodry Road. Between one ninety-one up to Yukon and, and the drainage component has become a major factor in this design element. Since they've, Kim Lee Horn has been working on this roadway design, they are well versed with the watershed involved in this project. Um, also, there's a contractor working on a Tech Dot project at, at, um, Loop and Yukon. And they are needing filter. Just as a side component. Um, this agenda item for this design work is, the cost is three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. This cost has a potential to save two to four million dollars in roadway construction costs for Fodry. Um, funds are available for this, uh, this PSA with Kim Lee Horn. In the, uh, Fodry Road design account using the two thousand and nineteen certificate, certificates of obligation. Um, so that's kind of the background. I have on, available online today, Ray Carrasco with Kim Lee Horn. I was going to have him give an overview of what this particular project is, is all about. Uh, Ray, are you on?
May have a button. Hal, is there something that you wanted to show us in terms of the drainage shed?
Oh, I, I, let's see. I don't know if I have those exhibits, but I think they're, Ray just brought them up.
All right, very good, thank you.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council and everyone else in attendance. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll, I'll kind of take off where Hal left off. This is a graphic of, for one, the, the Fodry corridor that's being designed currently from one ninety-one to Yukon. Is being designed to, from a two-lane roadway to a five-lane undivided roadway section. And in our design, one thing that we looked at was the drainage for this corridor. And if I may point out that you'll see the drainage area that's in question. It's a pretty sizable drainage area. It, it runs through the Parks Bill Development. It runs just north of the shallow estates development. And one, the, the, the point that it wants to get to is this crossing just south of Fodry and one ninety-one. There's a currently, some bridge structures there under one ninety-one fronted roads that take the drainage from the north to the south. And so that was our, our focal point. You know, in looking at the drainage design for this project. When we initially laid out the project and laid out the needs for the, the drainage infrastructure is going to be needed to convey this, this watershed here. You'll see here that we have labeled three eight by four covert boxes. They're pretty sizable boxes that were going to be located underneath the pavement. The water, these boxes were being designed at a twenty-five-year storm. And they were being designed to, to carry the water, to intake the water like through a covert. And then carry the water underneath the Fodry pavement and then outfall into the drainage basin that's just northwest of one ninety-one and, and Fodry. And in doing so, we put a cost to that. And with, with that size of box and the amount of boxes that were going to be needed, it got pretty costly. And so, working with Tom and Hal and Yervand and Joe at the city. We started, you know, looking for alternative ways to save money, to revise our design. And that's when we started looking at a bigger picture, you know, for, for this area to the north of Yukon. And as Hal mentioned, you know, there was a, this, this property here as it got annexed and conveyed to the city, is my understanding that it was, it was donated and, and with the anticipation that there would be some parts components in this area as development grew. And so we started looking at this drainage area and looking at incorporating a linear detention pond system. And let me see if I can, here it is. That would help mitigate or slow down drainage enough that we could eliminate two of the boxes underneath Fodry. And so that's what this project is for, is to design a set of linear detention pond basins that would hold old water and release water at a certain rate. Enough that would only be suitable for one box under Fodry. And like I mentioned before, this was, as, as you, as we design and lay out these ponds, there would be a I guess we would be designing them in, for future use and future development along this corridor.
So let me ask you this question. So are, are, are you going to be moving dirt or are you just going to be moving vegetation? Or are you going to, are you going to shape and, and are you doing inversion? I mean, what are you doing?
We would be designing the, the ponds at certain depths and, and pretty much the dimensions of the pond.
You're going to do an excavation then?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
An excavation and, and the ponds would also be linked such that they would start releasing water from upstream to downstream. And at a slower rate, up to just north of the shallow estates.
Okay.
And that's where.
What's going to happen north of the shallow there? I mean, is it, is it, is it going to go back to in natural topography?
Well, I, I believe this city staff is working with the developer here or the property owner here. You know, it would incorporate this red outlined area as well as the, the two ponds that currently exist between the Parks Bill Development. As well as future development that's going to happen in this property here.
So Mayor and Council, if I may, this is Tom Kerr. And so that linear property kind of indicated there in the red with a hatching was dedicated or donated to the city for detention and park services. And so and yes, it will be detention. We have design criteria in terms of we want the slopes to be compatible with parks, say six to one and that type of thing on the detention. And the contractor is the one who potentially, the contractor who's working on the TechStop project is the, is who we are seeing to do the excavations. Because they will benefit from the material in itself and.
Tom, what's the dimensions on that retention pond down there to the south?
You're asking the guy who can't give you good numbers, I think. It's, I think, I don't, I don't know that I'm telling you right, but that's probably about a, the area that it's in is probably about a hundred and fifty by three hundred feet, I would think, but.
What's the depth on it?
Mayor, are you talking about this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one, this actual pond hasn't been, the dimensions haven't been set yet. They'll get, they'll get set with the rest of the design. There's currently, there's currently a, an existing low, low line area there right now. But we would look at, you know, reshaping that as needed. When we build the intake structure of the box and we know, you know, what the release rate is and what we, what's actually needed here.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's, that's why I was asking, because that will determine the, the dimensions that. Are you going to sell them? And so we're, we're selling the material in order to offset the cost?
Yes, Mayor, that's, we are working with the contractor on. We may be asking for enough, so the contractors has the benefit of using the material. He would be looking to excavate this material from someone in the area and would normally probably expect to pay something. If we are asking for, and it kind of depends on our design in the end. But depending on how much shaping and that type of thing we want to do will likely affect what he considers he can afford to cut and still pay for material. But in the end, the material that's excavated potentially will save us a significant amount of cost. Especially if we don't have to excavate it, but we will hopefully receive some purchase value as well.
Tom, are you going to design this for the one hundred year flood or what do you design, what, what, what criteria you use?
What have we got there, Ray?
One hundred years, five hundred years?
One hundred year, it wouldn't be more than one hundred.
Very good. So those two retention ponds, they, they drain into the ones that run between all those houses down at Parks Bill?
Yes, sir. Let me, let me switch to my, I'm going to switch to my Cam Z. And it'll give a little bit better.
You can road where it goes. On your, on your other. And I assume it went through the middle of those houses that exist currently.
Yes, you can see this is Fodry Road here. And then this is Yukon Road here. And then this is the Parks Bill Development. And then let me zoom out just a little bit and you can see the layout for the, the detention ponds north of Yukon. And then these, this design will take into, it'll be incorporated into the existing cross structure that's at Yukon right now. And that leads into these Parks Bill ponds here. And then currently, P-Bar Ranch and Crossby, they serve as low-water crossings. And so we would evaluate, you know, how the low-water crossing works with the detain and release design. And look at, you know, do we keep that or do we improve that by adding cross coverts here? As well as evaluate the low-water crossing here. And as well as with what the property owner here is, is looking to do for development. Yes, sir, I hope that answered your question that, yes, it would incorporate the existing ponds at Parks Bill.
Yeah, I just thought, I've been out there a lot, I just thought that, that road, whatever that road is on the south end of Parks Bill is higher than the retain, retention base because we have this future city park. I think that's where, and that road seems to be higher than retention base, I don't know how, low-water crossing.
Yes, and, and one thing to mention here, these ponds were designed with, there's some, I believe there's some well sites that were incorporated into these ponds. As well as even some, some parks overlay, potential uses while it's dry and up out of the, you know, the water level. But, but as we move to the north, we would be looking into the same concept of providing for some well pad sites, parks overlay use like Hal mentioned. And also just connectivity between all of the ponds.
I just don't, I just don't see how on a hundred-year flood that you're going, a low-water crossing works. I know we don't have very many of those, but looks like to me on that south end, it needs to go underneath that road rather than over the top of it.
Yes, sir. And we'll, we'll be, we'll, we'll evaluate that. And if that's what needs to be done, then we will propose that to the city in our design and just look at the effects of doing that.
Follow that, of that retention base, I've driven it several times.
Yes. It may, it may be very likely that you do see a, a structure here across, under P-Bar Ranch.
Yeah. I don't remember what name of the road is, but, but that's also if you had a hundred-year flood that goes across that road, you cut those people off on the east side. Getting out that way, they have to go down to, down to Yukon and go out back the other way, which they, which they'll be able to do, but I just kind of landlocked that, that section of the housing development.
Yes, sir.
So Mayor and, and Councilman Thompson, so I'm not misleading you or anything like that. Those, those coverts as he was discussing were twenty-five-year event coverts. And so our, our minimum goal would be to achieve twenty-five-year mitigation to reduce the number of coverts that are needed. And then certainly we will be looking at a hundred to see, see if we can achieve a hundred-year event-type detention. But our first, our first perspective on this was to try and mitigate the approximately six million dollars associated with the coverts. And maybe limit that to two million.
I'm sorry to cut you off, I just don't, I just don't want it to happen, what happened to us out there in that new development is what happened to us across this cold snap that the electrical people didn't anticipate because they weren't looking forward far enough or in a hundred-year situation. And, and I, you know, we're, we're having to do this and, and I just think it's, you know, I think we need to be responsible. We need to plan for a hundred-year flood because, you know, Lord knows it, when it, when it does rain out here, it does rain. And I just hate to see us, you know, under, under-engineer it. You got one chance to do it, do it right. And that's a growing area out there, it's not going to get any smaller. And I just think we need to, you know, you're trying to spend three hundred thousand to save, you're saying three to four, paying for, for one or two cover, I mean, I don't know.
Yes, sir, I understand what you're saying a hundred percent. I, I just, I, I don't want to tell you that I, that we can fit a hundred-year in all of that area, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to promise you that's something that I can. But I understand what you're saying, you're, you're correct, yes, sir, we'll do, very maximum we can do there.
Just try to do your due diligence.
Yes, sir.
The more coverts, the more debris. Any more questions or comments? When are you anticipating this all to kick off, guys?
So we would be bringing that to you at the next meeting for formal action as your consideration. If you approve it, they are, Ray, I don't mean to jump in front of you there, you can tell me if I'm wrong or what. But the, my understanding is they're scheduled to start the day after, so.
Okay, sir, we have our surveyors ready to hit the ground the day after. And what we, what we're anticipating is, you know, getting the survey of all of this area and beginning to design these, these ponds. We understand that the contractor may not be needing them until the fall, until the October timeframe. But we're going to expedite the design in case, you know, things get sped up on the contractor's side. We'll be ready to coordinate with them and allow them to begin excavating. If, if they speed up, if their schedule gets moved up for some reason. Then we've also discussed a plan to do a phased design to start downstream and give, start giving them information downstream for them to excavate and not hold them up.
Okay. Okay, so you, are you guys going to do a grid, a grid survey on that?
We're doing a topographic on-ground survey. And then also the easement, the drainage easement, we'll lay out the easements. But conventional on-ground topo survey.
What's, what's the footage on that?
What was your question, sir?
What, what's the footage on that width and length? Are we talking about fifty-two eighty? Are we talking about a mile? That looks like a hundred foot, two hundred, two hundred and twenty feet across. It, it's okay.
Yes, sir, I'd, I'd say it's pretty, definitely about a mile or more.
Yeah, you're looking at a bit of mile up there up top and a quarter here, okay. Any more questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, sir, very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
So now we are going to item eleven, consider authorizing the conveyance of property for the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. Philip, are you on, sir?
Yes, sir, Council, Mr. Mayor, good afternoon. Council and Mr. Mayor, this approval of this item would convey property, city-owned property near the area of Avian Mexico and Fitch to the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation for the construction of thirty-three work, workhouse, workforce unit housing in this area. Back in, in early twenty twenty, late two thousand nineteen, the city of Odessa partnered with HFC or the Housing Finance Corporation to provide both sewer and water and road improvements to the property. This cost was split with Grow Odessa to provide these infrastructure additions to the property. The water and sewer work has been completed at this time and the road has been roughed in for the development. There is additional work that is needed to add more dirt fill to the property so that franchise utilities such as gas, cable and electric can be brought into the property and also so that the road and electric can be brought into the property and also so that the road can be completed. City staff has visited with with Jill, the director with the Housing Finance Corporation, and we have to discuss the conveyance of the property and to continue further work and the home construction at this location. It was agreed upon that we seek the conveyance of the property to the Housing Finance Corporation at this time. And this is for your consideration at the next council meeting.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Philip? Nope. Philip, is John or anybody here as far as the for the lots or anything like that? Are they here at all?
What was the question, Mayor? I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if John or anybody was here.
John Landgraf.
Oh, he's not here. That's right. I'm sorry. Michael told me he wasn't going to be in attendance. Okay, I just had a question on lots. No problem.
Is there information that I can help provide? If if there's something you'd like for me to provide, I can definitely track that down for you, sir.
Not a problem. I I can call him and ask him at a later date. There's no big deal.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Philip, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go to item twelve, consider addendum to the second amended economic development agreement between O D C and the Permian Basin Food Bank. Ms. Brooks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Tracy, I know you're on on the on. Do you want me to address this or did you want to? I'll go ahead and address it. This is an addendum to the second amended economic development agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation and the West Texas Food Bank. West Texas Food Bank and the O D C entered into a second amended economic development agreement on May first, two thousand twenty for the purpose of expanding the cooler freezer capacity of the warehouse distribution center. West Texas Food Bank spent less than anticipated on the cooler freezer expansion, which leaves an unspent balance. The West Texas Food Bank has requested to use the remaining funds to purchase a tractor, trailer, and forklift in support of the warehouse distribution center. The O D C approved the addendum at their March eighteenth, two thousand twenty one meeting.
And Natasha, Wes, this is Wes. I'm on if there's any questions unrelated. I was able to get in here.
Hi, good afternoon, Wes. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Wes on the on disagreement between the O D C and the Permian Basin Food Bank?
Wes, hi, this is Deitra. And so O D C had no concerns regarding the use of the the funds for the trailer and forklift.
No, ma'am, it didn't. As far as their obligations to what they were initially using it for, it is a different use, but there's no additional funds. This fell within the range of the previously approved number. And it helps them provide more opportunities to more folks and distribute more food. So it was all all fell within and they they voted unanimously to do it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions or comments for Wes or for Natasha? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, we're gonna consider item thirteen. I'll consider a motion in a second to reset the executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one to deliberate and permanent evaluation duties discipline complaint dismissal from public office employees. And that's Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four. Have a motion in a second.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could read the proper agenda on the on the screen.
That was a question I was asking right now on another screen. Thank you, Ms. Grimaldo for saving me. Go ahead. Did you hear? Yeah.
Yes, to recess for executive session to consider the evaluation of applicants for the position of the Associate Municipal Court Judge as authorized by the Texas Government Code Section five five one point oh seven four Personnel Matters, if there is a motion.
Do I have a motion?
Go move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Yes, ma'am.
For purposes of this item, can can you read that out? Again, I know that Norma read it, but
I have a motion in the section research executive session to consider evaluation of applicants for the position of Associate Municipal Judge as authorized by the Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven four personnel. Do have a motion.
Go move, Deitra.
I have I have a motion by Ms. Councilman White. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Warner. All of you are indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in session. We will log on and log on to another. We should be on now. Is that correct? Norma, you want she's Norma, can you hear me?
This is still the regular meeting.
Okay, let me get off of that and then we'll go. Did Norma send the other one?
I didn't get.
Yes, sir. I sent it on Friday, but I can resend it to you.
Yeah, will you go ahead and just resend that Norma real quick because we get a lot of emails. We get lost in the mix.
Okay, we'll do.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And brought me back here.
Yes, no, she's gonna send another one, Tom. So click on the one that Norm sends.
So now we are going to item eleven, consider authorizing the conveyance of property for the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. Philip, are you on, sir?
Yes, sir. Council, Mr. Mayor, good afternoon. Council and Mr. Mayor, this approval of this item would convey property, city-owned property near the area of Avian Mexico and Fitch to the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation for the construction of thirty three workworkhouse workforce unit housing in this area. Back in in early twenty twenty, late two thousand nineteen, the city of Odessa partnered with O H F C or the Housing Finance Corporation to provide both sewer and water and road improvements to the property. This cost was split with Grow Odessa to provide these infrastructure additions to the property. The water and sewer work has been completed at this time, and the road has been roughed in for the development. There is additional work that is needed to add more dirt fill to the property so that franchise utilities such as gas, cable, and electric can be brought into the property and also so that the road can be completed. City staff has visited with with Jill, the director with the Housing Finance Corporation, and we have to discuss the conveyance of the property and to continue further work and the home construction at this location. It was agreed upon that we seek the conveyance of the property to the Housing Finance Corporation at this time. And this is for your consideration at the next council meeting.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Philip? No. Is John or anybody here as far as the for the lots or anything like that? Are they here at all?
What was the question, Mayor? I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if John or anybody was here.
John Landgraf.
Oh, he's not here. That's right. I'm sorry. Michael told me he wasn't going to be in attendance. Okay, I just had a question on lots.
No problem. Sir, is there information that I can help provide? If if there's something you'd like for me to provide, I can definitely track that down for you, sir.
Not a problem. I I can call him and ask him at a later date. There's no big deal.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Philip, thank you very much.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, how are you? Hope they remembered to come back to the regular meeting.
Right, there is Tom. We thought we were we thought we were gonna be the Lone Rangers here.
No. Thinking about tiptoeing out, but you know, thought better of it. Easy to do.
Getting better at figuring out how to go back and forth. I couldn't hear it first, but I'm getting better at it. Do you sure you have big plans for your birthday?
Oh, my goodness, Lance and Lindsay and my little Levi came over today and they and Jack took me to lunch and but we actually did my birthday Sunday while the family was all together.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah, so that made it very, very nice.
Norma, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you send us a list of birthdays? I'd like to have that.
I'll be happy to.
A good idea, yeah. Okay, we have we have everybody back on.
Maybe. Think so.
I'll see Tom. Yeah, he's there.
First one.
We're here.
We're here.
I'll entertain a motion in a second to reconvene into the city council work session. Seeing that we took no action in executive session. Is there any other business that we need to consider today in this work session? Is Michael? No, sir, not with their business. That that is the end of the agenda. Okay. I will consider a motion in a second to adjourn. So moved. I have a motion by Councilman Mata. Do I have a second?
Second.
Whatever.
I'll give I have a motion by Councilman Mata. I have a second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against indicated by saying nay. Motion passes. We are convened. Very good job.
Happy birthday again, Deitra. Bye.
See you guys Thursday.